Hey, welcome everyone to our Borough Council pre-meeting on a cold January night. So to start us off, we have a presentation from Cityscape on Phase Two. So, welcome.
Thank you very much. Do I have the ability to share my screen? Yeah, I'm just waiting for the host to allow me to share my presentation. Okay, great. Thank you very much. All right. Thank you for having us this evening. I'm Susan Raybold with Cityscape Consultants. And we're going to be walking through our second part of the wireless master plan that we've been working on. I have with me this evening Travis Lapage. And the overall agenda will be that Travis will respond first to you with his presentation for wireless coverage analysis for public safety. Once he finishes his presentation, I'll resume with the personal wireless service inventory mapping, the engineering analysis of the coverage maps, and then we'll talk about next steps. So Travis, just let me know if you want me to advance the slides.
Sure. So good evening, everyone. As Susan mentioned, my name is Travis Lapage, and I am a director with Federal Engineering. Federal Engineering and Cityscape are partners on your project and have worked together for numerous clients previously. And I was involved in this project since the beginning. So everything from the initial project kickoff meeting through the user interviews, and then of course, the analysis and development of the recommendations that we will look at momentarily. So as you can see on the screen, that's just a little bit about me. I've been with Federal Engineering for 15 years. And also contributing to our project were a couple of subject matter experts by the names of Terry Forehand and Julian Duran. Some of you folks might know Terry. He was doing some of the interviews along with myself. So it may be a familiar name. So we're ready to present the results of our report. And we're going to basically follow, you know, the order of that the information was presented to you. So first, I'd like to briefly describe the state of emergency communications within the borough. This will give you a snapshot of what we observed, the data that we collected, and the initial findings that we developed. So the first major point is that the Allegheny Public Safety Radio System provides emergency communications for the public safety agencies within the borough, namely the Police Department and the Volunteer Fire Departments. They also provide primary communications for the McCandless Franklin Park Ambulance Authority. So that's the Allegheny County Public Safety Radio System is the primary system providing great public safety communications for those agencies. As you can see in the second bullet, it's quite a robust system. They do provide service for 130 municipalities within the county. And you can see the breakdown of different disciplines just below that. So continuing on discussion, discussing the state of emergency communications within the borough. Aside from public safety, the Public Works Department and Parks Department primarily use commercial cellular services. And they also have a, what's called a low-band system. That's low-band frequencies. And those are used namely for truck-to-truck communications during the snow removal operations, which I know you've been having some snow of late. So that those, that system would be being used for that during this time. In addition to supplement the cellular networks if there's any issues with that. The second point there is that when we took a little bit of a deeper look at the low-band system, we discovered that the frequencies that the borough had licensed to use that system have expired with the FCC. Those licenses expired in 2003, and the license was canceled by the FCC because it wasn't renewed in September of 2003. So that's something that we'll take a look at later, but that would need to be addressed should the borough decide to continue to use the low-band system. Some of the things about low-band communications is that it's often hindered by noise and static. And what that does is it significantly reduces the coverage and the quality of the radio communications that takes place over that system. And that makes it difficult for the users to clearly hear audio, especially on the first transmission. The next part of that in the middle there is that the marketplace is not supporting low-band technology as they used to. So it's becoming increasingly difficult to not only acquire, but to maintain and repair low-band equipment. Manufacturers have discontinued most of their lines of low-band equipment. Typically, at this point, low-band is just used for paging, and even paging is moving to the higher bands and actually digital paging and even internet paging and paging over the cellular systems. So that is also, you know, definitely decreased in which represents why the manufacturers haven't been investing in it. Low-band primarily today is still used by the military for certain applications. But for public safety, domestic public safety, it's really reached its peak years ago and is fading away. So it is increasingly difficult to get that equipment and maintain it. And we'll see when we get to it that we don't recommend continuing to invest in low-band equipment. So kind of wrapping up, where is the borough with emergency communications today? So the county, which you remember, provides communications for fire police and the ambulance service. They are currently in the process of, they actually have procured, so they have a contract in place to implement a new replacement radio system. That radio system is not obviously in low-band. It's up in the ultra-high frequency or what we call the UHF band. So that system implementation and design is going on at this time. It is a standards-based digital system, which is based on the standard you can see there. We call that EPCO Project 25. And county personnel, when we interviewed them and had subsequent technical calls, indicate that the system contractually with the vendor is going to provide coverage within 98% of the county's geographical area. Now, that's important to note. That doesn't necessarily mean 98% of the borough's geographical area, which we'll take a little bit more of a look later. So the next topic and subject of my discussion today with you is what did we identify from the user interviews and from the documentation reviews and other data gathering efforts? So we conducted interviews with the folks and the stakeholders that you see on the screen there. That's Borough Administration, RAGE, Fire Services, Police Department, the Ambulance Authority, and the county. So one of the, you know, biggest hindrances in wireless communications is, I'm sure you all are familiar with, with your cell phones and Wi-Fi and other technology you use is coverage. So the loudest sounding cry that we heard from the stakeholders was poor or non-existent coverage within many areas of the borough. And within the report, we detail those areas that we discussed with the stakeholders in detail. And just to summarize here for our purposes, the significant areas of deficiency included those you see there at the bottom of the slide. Continuing on with what the needs that we identified within the borough is that stakeholders expressed the need for additional channels. So that's capacity, especially during large-scale events. So with land-mobile radio, whether it be low-band or UHF, like the county system, it can be overwhelmed like the cellular system can be during a time of a natural or man-made disaster. So we heard a number of stakeholders express the need for additional channels to capacity, so they didn't have to either wait to talk or try to talk a number of times before the transmissions would get through. And you can imagine during a high-speed pursuit or during a fire or a medical emergency, you know, as you all know, seconds can make a large difference in the outcome of that response. The next point there is that the channels quickly become congested. Since the channel that's used by the borough, public safety departments are also shared. So you do have some shared channels, and those are used on an as-needed basis so that not only do you have within the borough a demand on these channels, but since the channels are shared, there's an additional demand placed on those causing potential for existing congestion and delays in communications. So what are our recommendations after we have gone through the analysis? Well, based on what we heard from the users and our assessment, both technical and operational assessment of how the borough agencies operate, we outlined two paths of consideration in the report. The first is a single repeater UHF system. So you might recall that I mentioned that there is a low-band system that is currently used primarily for truck-to-truck communications that has a site on top of the administration building for the borough. So what this would do is it would replace the low-band with ultra-high frequency UHF, a UHF band system. And that would become the primary system for public works and also could serve as a secondary tactical channel, which would help to alleviate some of the overloading and congestion concerns that I spoke about just a moment ago by some of the public safety agencies. Now, the last part of that sentence is important because when we discussed this with some of the folks in the borough before, there was some concern about that. Now, this is wind dispatch monitoring. So the Allegheny County 911 Center monitors and records all public safety communications that take place over the borough's, excuse me, the county's emergency radio communication system. So when there's technical operations that require additional channels that don't need to have dispatch intervention or recording, then this would serve as a logical extension to that UHF system because the county system is a UHF system, and this would be a UHF system as well. So they would be in the same band, which eliminates the needs for multiband radios and extra cost and complexity. The second point there is kind of what I call a no-brainer, is that the migration of the public safety users that are currently on the county system will obviously be on the replacement system that the county is implementing. So continuing on with the recommendations, a little bit more about this, what is this UHF repeater that we're talking about? So it would become the new Public Works primary radio channel, as I mentioned. And as I actually mentioned, that implementing this new channel would allow the public safety departments to communicate directly with Public Works users during incident response, which cannot take place now over the radio system. That would have to take place now over a patch from the county or cell phones. So that would allow what we call interoperable communications or the ability to interoperate more seamlessly between those agencies. If there is a, a lot of times, case example is if there are trees down from storms or other things and roads need to be cleared, power lines need to be removed before emergency vehicles can access a road. That's a good example of when that would help minimize the time to respond in those situations. And lastly, we analyze the coverage, radio coverage that could be provided from this single-site UHF repeater system. And Susan will advance the slides and show you this map. And I know everybody likes to see maps, and so I allow you to look at it for a minute, and I'll explain what all this means. So obviously, the yellow triangle down there, just below the Franklin Park label, that would be the single UHF site, okay? That's the single-site repeater that could be placed atop of the administration building or on a structure of some sort. The outline there, of course, the black outline is the borough geographical area, which would be the service area, the primary service area, I should say, for the borough. And then you see these different shades of color. So the red is portable coverage. So within radio systems that public safety and public service use, you have portable radios, which are the radios you see on the hips, run around the belt of a police officer or fire service or EMS provider. And those typically have a microphone, push-to-talk microphone that they use for that. Now, there's also mobile radios. Those are dash-mounted. They look, they're larger, and they're in the vehicle, kind of like the old cellular phone technology where we used to have a quote-unquote "car phone" in your car. It was actually a physically mounted device in the car. Now, the difference, why is there a difference here? Because the mobile radios that are installed in the vehicles have a higher power source. They're able to receive and transmit at higher power levels. The portable radios are much smaller and are operating on batteries, so that the power levels are much lower. So naturally, you're going to have difference in coverage, the ability to receive from the site and transmit back to the site and other users because of the differences in the technology. So the red cover, the red coloring, is the ability to provide 95%. So within 95% of the borough's geographical area, you would be able to get coverage within a 20 dB building. Now, what does that mean? That means that would be a thick hardened concrete structure with some steel. So that's what a 20 dB decibel building would be considered. So that's a pretty reinforced build. The blue is an 8 dB building, and that would be basically a light residential wood-framed house or a light shopping center, nothing with big concrete blocks and steel. And then the green is what we call on-street coverage. So that would be if you were walking on the street or you were located on a street level or outside using a portable radio, the green areas is where you could expect to receive coverage within the borough. So you can see in a summary that this single-site UHF system would provide public safety-grade coverage within the borough. So that's why one of the recommendations that we made was to consider implementing this to replace the low-band and also to serve as an additional capacity buffer. So what would this cost the borough if you were to implement something like this? So I always have to use some disclaimers because we, you know, these are cost estimates. So there are, you know, market factors and other things that will influence the numbers. So using hundreds of procurements that we do, we work in all 50 states and in Canada and in other parts of the world. We've been doing this for 42 years now, so we have quite a database of costing. We estimate it would be approximately $120,000 for the actual site, the fixed equipment infrastructure for this UHF system, plus an additional $65,000 for the actual radios, which would be the portable and mobile radios that would be used by the users. And then what would the Allegheny system provide? Well, we've been told by the county that, as I mentioned before, it's designed to cover 98% of the county's geographical area. It's also designed, as I mentioned, we talked about 20 dB and 8 dB. So this is an extra 16 dB of attenuation. So that would be residential and a little bit like commercial buildings. And because they're moving from an analog to a digital technology, the subscriber devices, as I mentioned before, which would be the portable radios and the mobile radios, would need to be replaced because they are not compatible with the replacement system. We recommend as part of this transition planning and migration and cutover planning that a meeting be held between the borough and the chief of the Allegheny County Emergency Services, who is basically the sponsor of this project and the manager of the system, to ascertain exactly what will and will not be provided because there has been some different things said about subscriber devices being provided, and then other folks are saying, no, they're not provided. So there is some clarity. It needs to be sought with respect to what the borough's financial obligations will be regarding the migration to the system. And that is the public safety portion of the presentation, and I will turn it back to you, Susan.
Okay, thank you. Before we move on, do you have any questions for Travis?
Yeah, I think we're good. Thanks.
Okay. Well, thank you, Travis. I appreciate you providing all that information. As Travis mentioned, Cityscape and Federal Engineering are partnering on this project. And Cityscape is focusing on the commercial wireless piece of the master planning project. So to transition, we're going from public safety to the macro and small wireless facilities that are used for your wireless handsets. And as Travis mentioned, you do have your Public Works and Parks Department primarily using the wireless network for communications at this time. So when we came out and did the assessments and while Travis's team had your interviews, Cityscape assessed a total of 17 structures that are in and around the borough that provide wireless coverage into your jurisdictional boundary. Within the borough, you have a total of seven facilities. You have five existing towers, one that's not built yet. You have one base station, and outside in the one-mile perimeter, you have 10 towers. And I just want to mention that some of those towers are small wireless facilities. And when they install a new pole for a small wireless facility in the right-of-way, that is considered by definition of the federal code of regulation to be considered a tower. So it's not a macro cell tower, but a small wireless facility. You have two larger facility towers. The one at F1 is a macro cell site, and it is used for three service providers. And then you have another facility at FO2, which is a tower that is used for personal wireless service providers. There's three at that one as well, and public safety. And all of the macro sites and tower sites and the perimeter are used just for macro cell sites. There are, we didn't find any small wireless facilities in that area. With regards to your small wireless facilities, you have four existing, and you have one that's proposed and has not yet been constructed. These are images of the two macro cell towers that you have within your boundary. The site at FO1 is at Linbrook Park, and it's 195 feet in height. It is owned by SBA, which is a tower company, and it is on public property. Site FO2 is a 147-foot tower. It's owned by another tower company called Crown Castle. And it is on the Allegheny Land Trust property. These are images of your four existing small wireless facilities. F04, F05, and F06 are newly constructed poles. So those are your newly constructed towers by definition. And the site at FO7 was an existing utility pole on which they put their antenna. And so that's considered a base station by definition. A base station is any structure that's not built for the sole purpose of wireless facilities. So water tanks, utility poles, rooftops are considered base stations. And you can see the difference in size between these small wireless facilities, the antenna and the larger antenna that go on a macro cell. The macro cell coverage and capacity is far greater than what is serviced by these small wireless facilities. The small wireless facility is primarily intended to fill in smaller gaps that the macro cells cannot reach or where the macro cell has exhausted its capacity, and it needs to have more capacity in a certain geographic area. Then they'll add small wireless facilities. This table, which is provided in the document that we gave you, gives an overall view of all of the facilities. And how many of them are macro and small, public safety? How many are on public property versus private property in the right-of-way? And whether or not they're concealed, semi-concealed, or non-concealed? Once we did the inventory and we mapped out these sites, we then did a propagation analysis from each of those facilities. This first map shows what it would look like if all service providers were at all 17 locations in and around the borough. The areas identified with yellow shading provide, or we estimate, that there is provided indoor coverage. And the areas in green, we estimate, are your in-vehicle coverage. Your outdoor coverage is in blue, and areas that are not shaded are your gap areas. Now, that's not to say that in some of these areas, you may have some in-building coverage, or you may not have any in-building coverage, even though it shows yellow. And I'll talk about why that is in just a moment. We felt that most of these sites could accommodate additional co-locations for service providers that aren't on their facilities presently. And so we feel like this is a good representation of what it would look like if all your existing sites were built out by all the providers that you have. And you have four service providers in your geographic area. You have AT&amp;T, you have Dish Wireless, you have T-Mobile, and Verizon. These next set of maps, though, are going to show you what the simulated coverage is by provider. But we don't tell you which provider they are. We simply refer to them randomly as Provider A, Provider B, Provider C, and Provider D. And so you can tell there's a big discrepancy between some of the patterns of deployment between different service providers. And that's important to understand because in actuality, you know, you don't have that complete coverage map that I showed you on the first slide. But that would be what you would, your goal would be for in the future is to maximize the use of all those sites. Cityscape then took your address points, and we applied some mapping tools to those points to show what the address point coverage capacities are estimated to be in the borough. So these first maps were our simulated propagation maps of what you could anticipate. But in actuality, we found that because of your topography, because of your ambient tree heights, and the variables on the types of trees that you have, evergreen, a mix of evergreen and deciduous, and the type of building construction that you have in your area, you have a number of geographic areas where, while it may show yellow, some of those buildings don't actually have yellow in-building coverage. And if I can, I can't zoom in. There we go. I can zoom in a little bit more. So for example, in this swath of yellow, So for example, in this swath of yellow, you actually see that these address points don't have in-building. They have outdoor coverage. Again, that would be because of, it could be because of capacity. It could be because of the tree canopy in and around those um address points. But what I really want you to focus on more is all the black dots. Because the black dots represent those no coverage address points. And when we talk about how to solve and bring in better coverage and capacity to your commercial wireless network, we want to focus on, one, these areas with no coloration. And two, these black and blue dots that are on these maps. We also took these address points and compared them to your census maps. And the coloration helps us to see which areas really have more density by the number of people per square mile, per census block, census tract. That helps us understand network capacity uh versus just coverage into an area that's not as densely populated. What we found is that over fifty percent of all of your address points throughout your borough have spotty or no coverage. And when we look at the address points for indoor coverage, in-vehicle, outdoor, and spotty, you can see that very few, overall, very few of your address points have solid in-building coverage. And again, as you go across and study this chart a little bit more, which is in the document that we provided to you, you can look at it more thoroughly there, that you have these um numbers that are pretty concerning with regards to the number of sites that have no coverage. And again, keep in mind that this is under an ideal scenario of having all of the providers at each of your sites. These numbers are much higher for providers that have not built out as much as some of the other ones in the community. Your project also includes Cityscape looking at your estimated upload and download wireless uh internet speeds from those personal wireless service facilities. This map on the left is demonstrating your estimated download throughput. The orange is the fastest speeds. And the green is the slowest. And again, the area with no coloration are your gap areas. And then this map is showing your estimated upload throughput speeds. Generally, your download speeds are faster than your upload because of the type of data that's being transmitted. So what do we, how do we use this going forward? What do we see in your future? Well, the first thing that Cityscape will want to do from this point, should you agree to continue on with the project, is we'll spend a little bit more time looking at your zoning. We want to make sure that you don't have anything in your zoning ordinance that might be a barrier to entry for future expanded network sites. And this is a map looking at your existing land use deployment pattern, your land use pattern, in comparison to the address points and census tracks that I showed you previously. Right away, one of the things that I noticed is that your non-tower wireless communication facilities that do not substantially change the underlying support structure are permitted in all districts. So what is that? That's like a base station. That's where an antenna, wireless antenna is being put on perhaps a rooftop or a water tank. Some sort of above-ground structure that doesn't require an actual monopole lattice tower, concealed tower, to be built. Any facility or antenna structure that does substantially change the underlying support structure is allowed in all zoning districts through the conditional review process. And during the assessment process, we couldn't help but notice that you don't have a large inventory of above-ground structures, except in this commercial area up here. And perhaps a few um institutional buildings. But for the most part, you have very limited height on your above-ground structures. So we would anticipate going forward that you would predominantly have tower-based wireless communication facilities for expanding the network footprint that you have presently. And for new tower-based, you allow them in your R1, R2, M2, and M3 zones through the conditional review process. They are not allowed in the R3, R4, and M1 districts. The R3 is shown on your zoning map in green. Your R4 districts are in red. And your M1 zones are this sort of um salmon-colored, I guess, tent. And when I looked at those areas more specifically and the number of black dots, or I should say, the lack of yellow dots in those areas in comparison to what would be available in these green and red-hued uh zone districts. It was apparent that, you know, you have two options, or I guess maybe three options to consider on how to fill those areas. One would be to try and see if there's sites outside of these zoning districts that could be installed that would provide coverage into these areas. Two would be maybe to look at what might be able to be installed in small wireless facilities in the right of way. Or three, to look at whether or not there are institutional, commercial-type buildings in those districts that could maybe be considered. For example, this map uh over here shows uh places of worship and government buildings and fire stations that could possibly be used. So our next steps would be to try and figure out, working with you, which direction you would want to go in in planning out future sites. We would, and and here are some sample questions for you to start thinking about, uh should we go forward. For example, do you support personal wireless service deployment on properties developed with land uses other than residential? Um, such as your public buildings, institutional buildings, worship buildings in those R3, R4, and M1 districts? You know, is that something that you might consider? Or um another question is, do you support macro cell deployment on your publicly-owned lands? I would assume that you do since you have a site at Lynbrook Park. But would you then be willing to duplicate that model on other borough-owned properties? There's a lot of benefit to doing that. You can control the placement, the maintenance, and also gain lease revenue from those sites. I also would want to know if you have a preference for small wireless facilities in your local right-of-ways. And if you wanted, if you're going to anticipate promoting that pattern, do you want to look at embellishing or adding to your development standards more uh standards that would regulate what they look like in your right-of-way? And do you prefer a macro cell solution versus a small wireless deployment pattern? Or would you want to consider a hybrid? A mix of macro cells and small cells um combined throughout the borough for future sites? So that brings us full circle to, you know, what we've done with the inventory analysis, the preliminary engineering maps that we've done. And for us to move forward uh would require you all to agree, to approve for us to move forward. And if you do, then we would provide you a more detailed questionnaire to help us gauge what it is that you would support, because that's important. We don't want to come up with a design that is so off-base from what you would support. We want to do something with you that you would like at the end. And that would then lead us to doing our conceptual future site scenarios. We also talked about doing a community survey to find out what the community would also support. And if we do all that, then we would come back to you later with all that information with the presentation for the results. And so that concludes my portion of the master plan project and available to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a quick question. On the table that you included about the address points, I think it said fifty-eight percent of our address points have spotty or no coverage. Do you have data on how that compares to either state or nationwide coverage in general?
No, I don't.
Just curious. I mean, it sounds like a big number, but I'm just curious in reality if that compares, that's comparable to what what's happening in on a broader uh scale.
I can see what I can find out. But it has um it seems ki, it 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 seems rather high to me for your community to have less than fifty percent, I mean, have more than fifty percent and in some areas into the sixty percent of address points without any coverage or spotty coverage. And it's a real concern with public safety because you have more and more, well, the vast majority of households have eliminated their landlines. And so they rely on their personal wireless services to communicate. So I I think it's, you know, something that is well worth looking into and how to come up with a way to get serviced into those areas.
Susan, that table that Laura's referring to, those numbers, I believe you said, are actually much worse in reality because that table reflects a scenario where all carriers are on all sites throughout the borough and the one-mile radius, correct?
That's right. So if you have one of these, one of the, if you are a subscriber to one of the phone service providers that doesn't have as many sites in the community as another one, then your coverage would be greatly reduced, could be greatly reduced than what I showed you.
Is there, what's the purpose of the hypothetical situation where you presume that all of the facilities or have the, all of the service providers co-located? Why is, why do you use that in your analysis?
Well, because sometimes when we look at the existing infrastructure, the existing infrastructure is not viable for additional service providers. Sometimes the sites are too short. Sometimes they don't have enough ground space around the equipment to accommodate future ground compounds for future service providers. But we didn't find that in your community. All of your sites have been well-designed to accommodate additional co-locations. There's plenty of ground space and easy access to all of the sites that we went to. And so we don't see that there's any reason why those existing towers cannot accommodate all of the future um providers.
Wasn't that a private decision between the tower owner and the service provider, lease-wise, whether or not the service provider wanted to pay the lease that the tower owner was asking for? I don't think the borough has any ability to make a service provider enter into a lease with a, with a tower owner, do they?
No, you don't. But you do have that as a preference by, you know, having a easier review process for using an existing facility. And two, your towers are owned by tower companies whose business model is to get as many co-locations on their towers as possible. And each of the two towers that you have have three total providers on them presently. And so each tower only needs an additional provider. It has, they're not the same providers on each one. So it's not, you know, like dishes on one, but they're not on another. T-Mobile's on one, but they're not on another. Um, but there's room for them. And so when they do decide to expand into the area, they have easy access to go on those sites. But you're right, there's no guarantee that they would go on those sites. But we presume that that they would, because that's typically what we see in their deployment models elsewhere.
I don't want to take up too much more of your time, but uh Travis, I do have some issues with your radio um proposal. Number one, um as far as I know, I'm on the fire department, we would never use Public Works channel because it's not monitored. I believe the police would never use the Public Works channel because it's not, excuse me, not monitored. Uh, number two, we have already upgraded our radios. I believe the police department has already done that. Um, we've had multiple talks with the county and have not bought any kind of satisfactory answers as to what areas may be covered in the future that are not covered now. Um, two percent of the county is still to be uncovered. It's still a really big uh, a really big swath, especially we have specific challenges on the interstate, which we do right now. Um, so putting a tower here at the borough building, wherever, if it's a UHF uh public works frequency, is really not gonna help us in terms of fire or police or EMS as far as I can tell. So I would like to see maybe some other suggestions there.
Sure. Yeah, we'll take a look at that.
Uh, any other questions?
Yeah, Susan, one quick, one quick question. The, the four small towers that recently were constructed along Grand School, those kind of surprised a lot of people when they just appeared. I don't mean, they weren't, I don't believe there was any approval requested, wasn't there? There was?
Well, they surprised us as well when we were out doing the assessments because we didn't know they were there. Um, but those are in these, uh, they're not in your local right-of-way. I believe that state maintained right-of-way. Or county, county maintained right-of-way. And so they went through the county for the review and approval. And I was able to get copies of those and I shared of of those um files and I shared them with you when I got them. And so if they, that's why you didn't see them come through, because they're not in your local right-of-way. Um, and they're, they are allowed to go in the right-of-way, the public right-of-way. Private right-of-way is different per the code of federal regulation. And so you do have some ability to have design types in place for them when they come through. But the county doesn't have those standards. But you could employ tho, you could employ those in your local right-of-way.
I guess my question is, do we know what, what um those towers are being used for? Are they for cellular service? Are they for only emergency service?
They are for, they are uh presently used by Verizon. And they are in the process of being upgraded for Verizon. And what we have learned through Crown Castle and a deployment in another jurisdiction is that the new antennas that they're putting in are there's some, they're, they're, they're not neutral hosts, but they're kind of considered like a neutral host in that. All the service providers can tap into them, so those four sites could potentially be used by all the providers at some point.
That's interesting, I drive by those, it happens to be on my route. Leaving the borough building, going home every night, I've seen them being installed. But I didn't have any, I didn't notice any real improvement, it seemed like I still lose my Verizon cell service at the bottom. At Pine Creek, so maybe that's why they're gonna put that, that one around the bend in. They have been working around, right when you smir- correct, they've been, there's been trucks working there right past the electric substation. Recently, still in Franklin Park, uh, they've had like a traffic signal and I don't exactly what else they're installing down here. It might be that fifth line that might.
It'll be online soon.
Okay, well, that will help, because that, that valley was, was literally one where you lost all service, I mean, there was. When I was calling my wife when I was without hill, I said, I'll call you when I cover up the other side. Okay, then I, I didn't know, because it didn't seem like we, we got a, I didn't, the council, I don't think got a lot of information on. I'm glad Tim knew something about it, but just nice to know when those things are going in. That, that's a step in the right direction, even though it's a small step, because I know they don't cover a very big distance. Thank you.
And Tom, uh, we did look at, at, at the time before a state law changed, there was a question, uh, Cohen Law Group. You know, put together some proposed ordinances that said, you know, you have. Police power through your zoning ordinance to regulate these structures in the right of way regardless of, of county, state, local. And there was a push for that, and we got that draft the first time, he said, then you can't. You know, have a zoning district that's the right of way and then say somebody has to go through conditional use, because what setbacks are you using or anything else? So we kind of struck those provisions and we did an update. And then the state law changed and that's what we've been dealing with the past three, four years that essentially. Addressed that issue and said municipalities, you can't use your zoning on here, this is a essentially a building permit process. So there aren't any public hearings, it doesn't come through planning commission, you know, it is utility management. There was always an argument, well, you know, are, are these wireless companies, are they public utilities subject to the P U C? Or are they non-public utilities, have like cable company here, not essential service? And state law a couple of years ago clarified and said, no, here's the process, you can put. You know, some standards in, but not too much and here's the default fees, just because municipalities were getting a little crazy on. Fees, so there is a standard uniform fee structure. But I do think as part of any type of zoning review or otherwise, we need sort of just a refresher or to go back and, and see how that. Plays out, because yes, and Tim and I were, were looking at these when these first came in and we questioned and. Present the process, the table through the public, just like there's not really a process if somebody's going up and changing a transformer or.
They're essentially on, as big as a telephone, it's standard telephone.
They, they, they pop them up a little bit.
Maybe five or sixteen higher than a cylinder telephone pole, so they're really not. As intrusive as, you know, a, a major tower might be. And I guess a lot of the borough, the area where I live in, we still have telephone poles in our electric still overhead, so. You know, some, yeah, I mean, so, now the upper part of our street is underground, but. Most of where we live and, and a lot of the areas through the boroughs still do have significant amount of overhead. Uh, a power lines and, you know, I, I guess, if, if I had my brothers, that might be a solution. Could that be a solution to solve some of the areas where we do have the overhead utilities? Now, that being said, I think most of our roads that go traverse the borough. Other than Grant School, which obviously has already been somewhat developed, are state roads. We have ten or eleven state roads, Rochester, Macaleer, I can't name them all, but if you go through them, there's more, more significant roads. That go greater distances are, are the Pendog road, yeah, because we, we put road down there.
The, the state makes you get an H O Bs if you're putting something there, so they have different rules than, than us. But if you also remember, one of those first meetings we had, we're trying to figure out what to ask them, systems. The, the concept that was explained is yes, you can have a couple of these, but you need a big tower somewhere. To transfer the system, the signal further to have a series and so definitely plays a part in there, but it doesn't eliminate.
Doesn't eliminate a power at some point, but. Let's say they quickly put road down, and it's a long run and it's, I think it's overhead, utility wires along there. There is a tower up on the hill, maybe to be down to the, I'm just wondering if that could be, it may not work in. All the areas of the borough, but it may be some areas where it could be part of the solution. Maybe not the entire solution, but a portion of the solution. And I didn't know, the reason I brought the Pendog road, we, you obviously, you have to have. The permanent, but you think Pendog would be open to that?
I don't know what their process or, or policy is, any type of encroachment or anything in. Right of way requires an H O B, improve that process. Again, they're springing up everywhere. And they've changed it so it doesn't have that cabinet right there at the base, now the cabinet's like up on old.
Yeah, you don't look hard, you wouldn't notice there might, not much of a, no question.
Yeah, so that, uh, sorry, we're running short in time here, Susan, for the next steps, when do we need to let you know?
Um.
We probably need to convene and discuss this over the months ourselves, uh, our working session is February.
Yeah, that's fine.
Whatever, the first Wednesday is, yeah.
Yeah, you know, we'd like to maintain the momentum of what we're doing, but you know, so, you know, a few weeks would be great.
Sounds good, hey, thank you so much for presenting and we will get back to you.
Thank you for having us, have a good evening.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Good night.
Uh, now we have a few minutes here, so please scroll right through, I'm ruled, I do not have an update. We have, we have a lot of gap between our meeting tonight, so we'll see if they, we get responses. Uh, new business, new agenda, what's that back?
Story, you got it in front of you, starting from the bottom up, right, you're doing a Meyer Dussel. Uh, we did do sort of informal poll among our other clients, we are seeing similar leaf freezes. Um, certainly heights, partial, and some others as well, Alexia in particular. Uh, we added the uh, appointments as discussed at the work session. Then the one item we talked about on the extension of the uh, lease management contract, I, I could go back and forth with Donna. See how we did this last time, uh, but maybe we just send a letter. Last time we made a change to the glass recycling, we probably failed. So we did do an extension agreement, we'll likely do something similar here. If it authorizes this, this motion authorizes the execution of that. We don't anticipate any other similar changes like last going in and out, this would just be a cost extension for.
Sounds good, um, A Long Spring Conference?
Very quickly, I'm making the reservations tomorrow, so if you plan to go to Seven Springs, I sent an email with the information that I need. Longer we wait, the better the chances that you don't get in the lodge, so let me know by first thing tomorrow morning.
It's just one night minimum, give stay or give stay two nights?
Uh, I think they do a one night minimum as well.
Uh, manage your core items, other, okay, uh, of course, counsel. Anything? Okay, right, good, okay, um, all right, sounds good, so, yes, we'll do our after meeting.